It is 7:00. We will now call the first meeting of the newly elected Town Council to order on this January 11, 2022. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Brian, would you start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As this is our first meeting of a new session, we will begin with Item B1, appointing an acting chair.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Joe Capitofaro as acting Town Council Chair.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Yes, sir.
Item B2.
Agenda item B2, that the attached rules of procedure be adopted for the term of this Town Council effective January 11, 2022.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Presentations and recognitions, we have none tonight. Our Eagle Scout will be joining us, we're hoping, in our February meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Public hearing, we have none, new items.
Yes, we have a new item. Under Agenda Item E, new items, I'd like to make the motion to add Agenda Item L31, appointment of the Chair of the Human Relations Commission.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. And then move on to public comments. Do we have anyone online for public comment? Kat?
I do not see any hands up.
We see no hands up. Would any members of the public like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing none.
Oh.
Up?
Made it just in time. We have Jay Toolin.
Jay, first meeting of the new session. You have the floor.
I'm sure you're shocked. Just a couple of quick things, I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight. I just want to wish you all a Happy New Year and congratulations to you all, newly-elected in particular Rafina, Keith, and Johnny, looking forward to attending the future meetings, as I always have. I do want to just make a quick comment about the sidewalk project. I know there's going to be some discussion about it tonight. I appreciate Kat and Russ responding back to some of my questions recently, but I do have some concerns, not a surprise. I'm hoping that as the discussion goes along, I'm not going to be any more specific other than I do have some concerns about exactly what presumably the company that you're going to be voting on tonight is going to be doing with the sidewalks, so I will be listening very intently. Appreciate the opportunity to talk, thanks.
Great, thank you, Jay. And I was remiss, we know who Jay is, but we usually ask for your full name and your address.
Jay Toolin, 39 Timberline Drive.
Thank you ever so much.
I should have known to do that.
That's quite all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none. What? No one else? Thank you, Kat. Okay, Item G.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion, we have the minutes, December 14, 2020, regular meeting of the Town Council.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passed unanimously. Item H, reading of communications and written appeals.
You have one piece of communication that came in this afternoon from an Edmund East Stanford, and it's at your places. And Maureen, I gave you a copy for the record.
That will be added into the record, thank you. Okay. Item I, report of committees, we have none. Item J, we are just going to the council chair, that would be me. Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to say I'm really looking forward to this new council. I think we've got two years, we've got a lot of things on our agenda, we'll be going through our strategic plan in the near future to set our priorities for the next two years, so I'm looking forward to a good two years. I'm sure we will continue on the legacy of Farmington and Unionville, keeping our quality town services, low taxes, and excellent schools, so I'm looking forward to that. Also, just a couple of notes, with the slightly chilly weather out there, keep in mind your pets, don't leave your pets out in the bad weather, space heaters, keep them three feet from anything out there, just drive me safe out there. Also, there is a record blood shortage right now. If you have the opportunity to reach out to the Red Cross, please do so, they are looking for donors throughout. COVID is ongoing, continue to do what you've all been doing, look out for your neighbors, keep them in mind, respect their space as you're going outside, and do all you can, and hopefully by the end of this term, this is all finally behind us. And the last thing I mentioned earlier, the strategic plan, we will be going over that at a later meeting, that's where we set our goals and targets for the next two years, what our priorities are. One of the things the Town Manager helps us with is to explain the time involved in each of those. We do have limited staffing time, so we have to set those priorities to see which are the most important items, and we get in as much as we can. The last two years, in spite of the global pandemic and shifting gears on anything, we did a great job of completing the tasks we were looking to get done, so I thank you and I look forward to more of the same in the next two years. We will now be moving on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, CJ. You have my written report in front of you, I'll just start going through the items. For, the first item, A, is the Town Council budget schedule, so I've attached the budget schedule, which includes your budget meetings, your workshops, the annual town meeting and referendum, so mark your calendar. Nutmeg air dates, just for the public, the Town Council meetings will be broadcast on Nutmeg TV, Comcast Channel 96 and 1082, and Frontier Channel 6062, Fridays and Saturdays, midnight, 3:00 AM, 6:00 AM, 9:00 AM, noon, 3:00 PM, 6:00 PM, 9:00 PM, Sundays, 6:00 AM and 3:00 PM, so we're on quite a bit. There also are videos, and there's a link to that. We usually invite our state legislators to our meeting in February, they would give us a short presentation on the upcoming state budget legislative session, I'd be looking for consensus that we still would like to do that.
Everyone agree we'd like to get them in in February?
Yes.
Absolutely. Great.
Okay. Reminder, we will have our Town Council official photo shoot at January 25 at 6:30 PM, and that will be a picture that will be displayed on the Council Chambers Photo Library, so we have that. Right now, I'm going to have the staff show a community and recreation service video, just a short video that Nancy Parent and the Community Recreation Services put on, and I thought it was informative, and we'll go from there. So, just a kind of a synopsis of some of the things that the Community and Recreation Department does, and we had quite a year with COVID, but they still really did quite a bit, so just thought that you'd be interested in that. The next item is the Farmington High School 1928 Building. So you have what's in my report, and as you know, the council's going to have to be making various policy decisions in the next few months about the future of the 1928 Building. The Farmington Building Committee and the design professionals are moving towards final design of the building and the overall site design, and they need to know whether the 1928 Building will remain on the site or if it will be demolished. For that reason, I'm recommending the Town Council set up an ad hoc committee in January 2022 to work with town staff to make recommendations to the entire Town Council on the following: One, determine if there's a space needs for the town; Two, recommend if the 1928 Building could be used for those space needs; and Three, solicit public opinion on the 1928 Building and the proposed use of the building; and Four, report back to the Town Council on their findings. Then, my thoughts are that the Town Council action will be based on the recommendations from the ad hoc committee and could include the following: Charge the ad hoc committee to create and recommend a statement of needs for the renovation of a public building, or begin the process to demolish the building, or other. I'm recommending that the Town Council set a special Town Council meeting in January to discuss this topic and potentially establish a charge for an ad hoc committee. So, I don't know if you have any initial reactions to this that we could have some discussion about?
Yeah, I think I'll just start off. When we disconnected the 1928 Building from the high school building project, we knew in the near future we'd be addressing the 1928 Building. Some of the biggest items which Kathy has on here, seeing what our needs are actually in town for this, and deciding if that could be used for the needs that we have, and also going out, are we going to go out and we're certainly going to get the public's thoughts and opinions on this. This ad hoc committee would be a group from the council and staff to set the stage so we can then go out to the public and get their opinions on this building. So any other thoughts, anyone wants to add, that's fine. Ed?
Yep, so I think that all sounds great. So there wouldn't be any residents on this ad hoc committee, is that what you're saying?
Right, not on the ad hoc, but that'll be talking about when we're including the residents and getting the full public involvement. This is just basically deciding what the committee with the residents will be addressing. So we're trying to find out initially what the needs are and how we will be reaching out to the public.
So is it just a needs assessment that the staff will be conducting before you impanel a group?
Kathy?
It would be the staff with some council members, and that's what the purpose of the ad hoc committee is, to kind of vet some different things, help the staff so that we can come back to the entire council on, A, if we have a space needs, and, two, whether or not we should be using the 1928 Building for that, and then help work on the statement of needs if that's the direction that they're going, and the statement of needs would then lead us to a public building committee, which then would have residents and people. But it should be noted that I didn't say this, is that we do have some funds available that I think that this ad hoc committee could use to solicit some general public opinion about the building, and we could do a survey or various things to get kind of a flavor on where people stand on it, and we do have, this, we had money left from the high school building committee, there was a survey that we could have done that we didn't do, so my thought was, is that that would go, that could be part of this ad hoc committee. One of the things that I've done through time is that kind of large policy decisions, instead of the staff coming back to the council as a whole with what my thoughts are on the policy decision, kind of work with small groups of the council to try to come up, so we, we're doing some of the legwork, and then make a recommendation to the council as a whole, and so that's really what the ad hoc committee is for. We've done it on various things throughout, like the last one, we did it for the Parsons, but we did it for the elderly tax relief program, we've done it for bigger policy decisions just so we have council input with the staff, so that when we come back, we kind of have consensus, what everyone wants, and it seems to move things along at a faster rate.
Yeah, I would encourage you to just reach out if you do have money in the budget that's left over from the high school building project, just to get an idea of what residents want, because as you know, when we were looking at the high school project, this was part and parcel of it, and people have very, very strong opinions in both directions of what should happen to that building.
Right, and that would be, and then the thought is, is that at the, a special Town Council meeting, we'd have more of a workshop meeting, and we'd go through the charge of the committee as a group, and that, it would basically look something similar to this, that's why I'm looking for direction, and that's where, again, the charge would be, again, to solicit public opinion, and the ad hoc committee would be doing that in conjunction with the staff.
And is there a timeline to get this done? Because I know the building committee, the high school building committee is working along separately to get all of their things.
Yeah, we have put together a kind of a draft timeline, it's, I think, I wouldn't say it's urgent, but it is important that we continue to move this along, because really the high school building committee, they need to know what's happening with this building. So, again, it's going to take some time on, because a building committee, this would be a building committee if the choice is to keep the building, you have to create a statement of needs, the council has to approve the statement of needs, a building committee has to be established, the building committee is established, and then you have to get that building, that to referendum, as you know, just similar. So, it's a period of time, and I think, Kat, when we were looking at it, we were thinking of, was it November?
Yeah, we were, we were thinking to put this on, if it moves forward with a building committee in the process, to be on the November ballot for a referendum question.
This November?
This 2022.
Okay.
So, basically, right now, we're just giving Kathy direction, and this would be for our, we haven't set this officially, but our January 18 meeting, we would discuss more about the ad hoc committee. Kathy's just trying to get a feel for, are we all good to discuss the creation of an ad hoc committee on the 18th?
Yeah, because the thought would be, is that at the next meeting that we have, we would vet it, if we were comfortable with the charge that was created, we'd approve it then, if we weren't comfortable, we still needed some work, we'd bring it to the next meeting, and try to get it, I really would like, if we were going to move forward with this, based on timing, to get it sealed by the end of the month, to have the ad hoc committee if that's the direction we're going.
I think that's a great idea. Am I all in favor?
Good.
All right. The next item is the strategic plan update. Attached, you'll find our current strategic plan, which needs to be updated, many goals are in progress due to the fact they're long-term, multi-year goals. Again, speaking with the chairperson, it was anticipated that we'd start the discussion of this at the January 18 meeting, it would be a special meeting, and then move on to the end of the month if we haven't finished. And typically, what has happened is that if any of the council people have ideas, they could give me general ideas, they could give me specific goals in advance of these meetings, and I can have them available for everyone so that we can talk about it, and then historically, the chair and the council ask me if I feel that there's goals that I should be bringing forward, I would bring those forward, and also, they've asked me to, we have a, like a chart that we do, that it gives, it's a color, it's assigned a color with its ranking of a level of attention it takes for both the council, for myself, the cost, the time constraints, how difficult it is to complete, so the council can kind of get an overall feel of this, how each one of the goals. So, if that's, again, this is how we typically have done it, if, I'm looking for direction, if that's how we would like to do it, again.
So this would be in, if we set, again, at our January 18 meeting, we'll start the discussion of the strategic plan, and if you're giving Kathy a heads-up from the staff point of view, which items are important to you and you'd like to see us discuss, she can give us some kind of idea of the time involved, as we, for those of you who've been here before, know, we look at all these different items and figure out which ones we can actually achieve during the course of the year. Kathy has a pretty good grasp on how much time some of these should take, of course, there are other items that pop up in the course of the year that get added to the staff workload, but it's always a good process, it's nice to see the charts, and I always like seeing how much time was expected to be used on it, not just the staff time, but our time and meetings involved for us as well, so. Any other thoughts on that, or should we go ahead with adding that to a January 18? All good?
All good.
Got consensus on it as well?
Okay. The next is the COVID-19 test distribution update. So we did receive test kits from the state of Connecticut, I'm sure you've seen it on the news, and I have sent you information about it, we did a mass distribution, gosh, I'm losing track of time, but when was that, Kat?
I think it was just last week.
Last week.
It was last week.
Yeah, at Tunxus, at Tunxus Park. The distribution for, I think, went very, very well. Unfortunately, again, we just didn't have enough tests for everyone that needs tests, but the process in getting the tests out, I think, went well. We've been distributing lots and lots of masks upstairs at the town hall, and we also are going to start a distribution hotline and email starting tomorrow, where residents can, we've received more test kits, and they can go online, if they can't go online, they can call a hotline. Again, we have not received a ton of tests, but we will distribute them, we're hoping to get them all out by Friday of this week. So, just to let you know, it has been very, very busy between Christmas and New Year's, trying to get these tests out, organizing it, and, you know, working to distribute them and the masks.
Kathy, do you know how many we handed out that day?
Yes, I think we do. Let me ask Kat if she has that.
The, at the initial distribution that we had, I believe we had just about 1,400 test kits that we gave out.
And we have a little less to give out for the next round.
And obviously, Nancy Parent was able to get some out?
Yep, oh yeah.
We couldn't come out?
Yep, that's the other thing, we've, we saved a bunch, and Nancy Parent is distributing those to the most needy, and we'll be doing that again, and also to some of our housing places and things of that nature. So, we've saved for that and also for our essential workforce.
Excellent.
And one of these things you've made note of, I think anytime you made this announcement, the people coming for the tests should be people who actually need the tests, the tests aren't to be sitting on your shelves and just in case I need it, if there's an immediate need, then you should be asking for the tests. We save them for the people who are really looking for them rather than just somebody who wants it. May I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Are we, are we asking people if they're showing symptoms when, before we hand them out?
This, on the online one, we are, they're filling out a form, and that's one of the reasons why we're doing it online, is because we want to keep, one, we want to keep track of who we're trying to give the test to, because unfortunately, with the mass distribution, we can't be getting addresses, and so now they have to fill out a basic form for us, and also the hotline, we're asking specific questions to.
Good, thank you.
Upcoming Town Council meetings, subject to your approval, again, what we talked about, the January 18 would be a special meeting, which would be next Tuesday night, it would be the 1928 Farmington High School Building Committee, the action would be trying to establish an ad hoc committee. Two, we'd be discussing the strategic plan, and three, the budget targets, anything that we did not get to, we would try to move to the next meeting, again, the strategic plan and the budget targets. If we didn't get to, finish the ad hoc, we would move that to the January 25, too. Just a reminder again, that the Town Council photos at the January 25 meeting, February 8 is our regular Town Council meeting, and February 22 would be our workshop meeting with the, we are already into the budget with a capital improvement plan. And I think that is it for my Town Manager's Report.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the Town Manager's Report.
I'd like to make a motion for it.
Would you make that motion?
I will. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Town Manager's Report.
Second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Just a couple of notes I will make, the video that everyone saw, it's incredibly impressive how much they got done over the course of this past two years. They're always working overtime, COVID certainly added some new challenges, but the outdoor concerts with the circles, people were staying in, things like that, bringing the meals to people who hadn't always needed meals, it's just great to see. A reminder to everyone here, when we come to our meeting on the 25th, if you look in the back of the council chambers, whatever you're wearing is going to be on that wall forever, so think about that when you get dressed that day. With that, if there are no other comments, all in favor of approving the Town Manager's Report?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Moving on to Item L, appointments.
Yes, motion for Agenda Item L1, that Halloran Sage be appointed as Corporation Counsel for the period of January 2022 through January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
As you can see, Halloran and Sage has been our town attorney since April of 2012. Two years ago, we went out for legal bid for our legal services, and I'm not recommending that we go out again this time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next.
I'd like to make a motion for Agenda Item L2, that Duncan Forsyth be appointed Assistant Corporation Counsel for the period of January 2022 through January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
And Duncan has been our lead town attorney since April of 2012.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item L3, that Pullman and Comley be appointed the Bond Counsel for the period of January 2023 through January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Even though that this firm has only been with us since April of 2021, the council that was with us last time remembers that this was a group of the bond attorneys joined the other firm, and so we moved the firm because they were no longer with the firm that we were with. So that's why, actually, even though we've only been with the firm for 2021, we've been with the lawyers for much, much longer than that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item L4, that Metzger Lazaric and Plum be appointed as Labor Counsel for the period of January 2022 through January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
And Lisa Lazaric has been our point person for, since May of 2012.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item L5, that Updike, Kelly and Spelcy be appointed the Land Use Environmental Counsel for the period of January 2023 through January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
This was a firm that at the last, two years ago, we appointed them, and I'm recommending that we keep them on as our Land Use Environmental Counsel.
Great, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item L6, that Joseph Schwedke be appointed as Treasurer from January 2022 until January 2024, and that compensation for that treasurer be set at $5,000 annually.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
The, Joe has been our treasurer since July of 20, 2004. The rate of compensation has been set at $3,500 per year, I don't think it has been changed for the last 10 years, and I assume that's your reason for bumping it up.
Correct. That is. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Motion on Agenda Item L7, that Julie Albert be appointed as Deputy Treasurer from January 2022 until January 2024.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Julie has been our Assistant to the Director of Finance since July of 1997.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item L8, that the following banks and investment pools listed below be designated as depositories for the town funds.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Here are the listing of the banks, as you know, you guys have to list our banks that we are able to use for our funds.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Brian? Just one quick question, are there any changes to this list from last year?
Yes, I think there is, and Joe, could you address that?
Sure. I think there's two new ones down here from the last, last time, Westfield Bank, out of Westfield, Massachusetts, and there's, uh... And there's, uh... The Stone Castle Cash Management LLC. That's also new. Everything else has at some point or other, some of them were approved that two years ago, some of them were added by the council during the course of the past two years. For example, Ion Bank, People's Bank, Tolio, those were added during, since two years ago. You did those immediately, um, in the interim, just to get more diversity in banks. So the two new ones are Stone Castle and Westfield Bank.
Are they replacing or adding?
Um, adding.
Okay.
There's been a lot, there's been some consolidation in the banking field and some of these banks actually probably coming back to in March or April. One of these banks is being acquired by another bank and so when that happens, I'll have to come back with the name of the new bank. But we're adding additional banks to get more diversity. We have a limit of how much money we'll put in any one bank and once we approach that limit, we start to run out of banks. So, and we're not chasing return, but we're also looking at some banks with, I mean, interest rates, you probably all know, are pretty low right now, almost, almost at zero. And so we, we do look for some banks that are, again, that are safe banks that we, that maybe, maybe we'll offer a little bit more in terms of, um, interest, interest rates just to get those. But the chief reason is just we don't want to consolidate. Our policy is no more than 20% of common assets could be in any one bank. So as, obviously as we gain more cash, especially now with the high school project and bonds for that coming out, moving more banks to the positive line.
Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on agenda item L9, that the following be appointed as members of or liaisons to the following entities or committees. And just give me a little minute to go through everything for you guys. Our ad hoc committee, be myself, Brian and CJ. Bicycle Advisory Committee, CJ. Board of Education, Rafina. CROG Policy Board, CJ and Kathy. CROG Transportation Board, Russ. Conservation and Inlands, Wetlands, Johnny. Economic Development Commission, Ed. Farmington Valley Health District, Kathy. Green Efforts Committee, Rafina. Historic District Commission, Brian. Housing Authority, Johnny. Human Relations Commission, Rafina. Land Acquisition, myself and Brian. Library Board, Keith. The Stephen A. Fliss Scholarship, CJ and Keith. TPZ, Keith. Yukon Communication, Ed, I'm sorry, CJ. Univille Historic District, Ed. Univille Village Improvement Association, Ed. WPCA, myself. Racial Equality Task Force, myself and Rafina. And the Retirement Board with Keith.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
All right. What are we moving on to here?
L10.
Do, do, do. Where is that a little less you gave me? There we go. I thought I had more written down here.
There you go, Joe.
Do you have it?
Let's see, I hope we have more on here. If I don't, I'll give you more.
I had it, I don't know what I did with it. All right. Agenda item L10, I'd like to make a motion that Miles Brown be appointed to the Architectural Design Review Committee for a three-year term beginning immediately and ending January 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on agenda item L11, that David Quisenberry be appointed to the Architectural Design Review Committee for a three-year term beginning immediately and end in January 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Figures I had everything and I lost it. All right, we're going down to L17.
I think it's 12.
We have a 12?
What's that? Uh, no.
Nope.
Uh, no.
We're going right down to L17?
Yeah.
All right, motion on agenda item L17, that Keith Vibber be appointed to retirement board for two years, beginning immediately and end in January 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
That make a motion on agenda item L18, that Bob Broku be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L20, that Joan Valenti be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L22, I'd like to make a motion that Mike Zepka be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and end in January 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
And make a motion on agenda item L23, that Kyle Cunningham be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and end in January 2024 and he is part of the IAFF Local 3103 Fire Departments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Make a motion on agenda item L24, that Stephen Egan be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and end in January 2024 and he is part of the IBPO for the Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L25, I'd like to make a motion that Chris Jidowsick be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and end in January 2024 and he's part of AskMe1689.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on agenda item L26, that Vic Mashad be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and end in January 2024 and he is part of the AFT-CT Local 6584.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda item L27, that Jeffrey Porter be appointed to retirement board for a two-year term, beginning immediately and then January 2024 and he is part of SEIU.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
And agenda item L30, make a motion that Mike Walsh be appointed to the TPZ Commission as an ultimate member for the balance of the two-year term, beginning January 11th and end in January 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I just wanted to speak on, uh, Mike Walsh's behalf. Mike is a licensed professional engineer who designs and oversees construction of mechanical engineering and plumbing systems that go into commercial buildings. He has a strong focus in codes and standards. Mike has a bachelor's in mechanical engineering and is now president of a mechanical engineering, or sorry, mechanical, electrical and plumbing design firm headquartered in Milltown. Mike is also a lifelong resident of Farmington and a fellow FHS 2001 graduate along with Ed and I, and I think he'd be a great addition to planning and zoning.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Great. Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay, we have L31.
Agenda item L31, I'd like to make a motion that Jay Toulon be appointed as chair of the Human Relations Commission, beginning immediately through June 30th, 2022.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? I'll make a comment. Jay is a very diligent attender of our meetings and we welcome him back. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay. Uh, moving on to item M. Old business. We have none. N, new business.
Motion for agenda item N1, award bid number 301, the Main Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, Route 10, Farmington, to Martin and Liverio Contractor Incorporated Bristol, at a contract cost of $1,055,836.56, subject to State of Connecticut review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy?
Uh, the purpose of this motion is to award a contract to undertake the replacement of sidewalks on both sides of Main Street, Farmington, Connecticut Route 10, from Route 4 to Highland Park Market. The work will involve the removal of existing sidewalks and installation of new concrete sidewalks and handicap ramps, decorative crosswalks, and the removal and reinstallation of traffic signs as required. Bids of the project were opened on December 21st, 2021. The town received eight bids ranging from $1,055,836.56 to $2,676,880. Staff have reviewed the paperwork and submitted by the low bidder and found it to be in order. The contract award is also subject to review of the approval of the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation and Economic and Community Development as they are the primary funding sources for the project. In addition, before actual award is made, the contract with Liverio will be submitted to the State of Commish, State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities for review and approval for affirmative action and small business set aside requirements in accordance with the June 2015 Special Session, Public Act 15 point, uh, 15 dash 5. Rafina had asked me a couple of questions about this agenda item and Rafina, if it would be all right with you, I would paraphrase some of your questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the first question was just about the funding and so, um, I just wanted to be clear about our funding sources. So the town has $2 million in total allocation for this Main Street sidewalk project. The breakdown is as follows. There's $1 million from the DECD Urban Grant. There's $375,000 from the Connecticut, um, Connecticut Connectivity Grant. The town received this grant in 2019 and transferred these funds to the project. And then we have $475,000 for LoSiP funding. The LoSiP program is formula-based entitlement funds distributed in municipalities to reimburse the cost of eligible capital improvement projects. And then the town also had, um, allocated $150,000 in the last budget, I think, from funds for the CIP, for a total of $2 million. So we have $2 million on hand for this project. How far will the sidewalks go down? And it's the west side of the sidewalk will be replaced from Route 4 to Highland Park Market. On the east side, the sidewalk will be replaced from Route 4 to the Main Gate subdivision, which includes a segment of new sidewalk. And this is a multi-phase project and the town's philosophy was to repair the existing sidewalk first before new sidewalks were constructed. Basically, Rafina had asked that, did the report say to go down to the CVS and there was lighting and other enhancements that were included in the, in the report that the town received? And that is absolutely correct. The streetscape improvements, including lighting, enhanced pocket parks, artwork, additional new sidewalks, are included in future phases of this project. It is possible to add the extensions of sidewalks to CVS. However, this portion of the project was scheduled to be included in Phase 2, mainly because new sidewalks undergo a different process by town ordinance. There is, there is, Rafina asked about ARP money being used and could, is there a potential to use those funds? And that, yes, if the council chooses to, they could use those funds. I think that was the summary of that and so I don't know if anyone has any questions, but we are very much under bid for this project. We would start by using our grant funds to fund this project. The 375 from the Connectivity Grant would be the first funds that we would use. Then we'd go into the DECD Grant, which was slotted right for the Urban Grant for Main Street. That equals $1,375,000. Our bids came in at $1,055. So I think that we'll see how things go as everyone remembers that I don't think this is going to be a very, very simple project. There's a lot of different nuances to it. So I think that there is a potential that we will be close to using that, the $1,003. Obviously, we'll try to keep them under bid, but every house, and there's some different things that are going to go along. So that's where we are right now with the Main Street bid. We would be looking to get out to bid and start the work as soon as we can in the spring. We do have some state approvals that we have to get through. We did receive one, I think, already, Kat, and so we do have a couple of more, but we're hopeful there is some time before the spring that we will be able to and then we can get started on this project.
So one...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will now open up for comments from the council. Rafina?
Sorry, thanks. Never all here, so, protocol. So you said the first phase should be completed, or actually you didn't, you say it'll be started in the spring and then the anticipated timeline is when?
Russ, how long is it going to take, you think, to do?
They have November 1st.
November 1st, okay. And then, do we then get started on Phase 2?
I think that, my understanding is that that would be, again, something that we're going to talk about in our strategic plan, about setting up a committee or doing something to do Phase 2.
Okay. And then the, the pool of money that we have is it the $2 million for all of the, all of the phases of the project? So is there only a Phase 1 and Phase 2 or is there a Phase 3? Like what's the whole plan look like?
I think it's three, is it three phases?
There's three phases.
Three phases, yeah.
Okay.
And what I can do is that, um, we have the, uh, the whole streetscape plan. I can get you a copy of that so you can go through it.
All right. And then, uh, some neighbors in, on Main Street had reached out and asked about the trees. Are those part of this first phase for like, if there are any trees that need to be replaced along Main Street? With the sidewalks, will those be tackled as well or is that in a different phase?
No, no trees will be touched.
No trees will be touched.
No trees will be saved.
Okay.
We explain that at our, over the, um, certain in the sidewalk, we're going to pull For came in the sidewalk, we're going to pull up and over roots, we're reducing, we're not cutting roots to do damage to the tree.
Okay, one last thing. Um, and I think a couple of years ago, the Main Street Commission, uh, the ad hoc committee that had made recommendations for this project, had suggested putting a footbridge of, or some sort, um, to link the apartments that are over by. Is it Summit and Birch, sort of diagonally across from Highland Park? Is that, will that still be part of?
I don't know if a footbridge was ever included. I, I think that there were, that, I don't think a footbridge was ever included in the master plan. There was quite a bit of talk about a light and having a, a light going across from Birch Hill to Highland Market. And so, but again, I think a light is something around, what is the cost for a traffic light? Like, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So, but there definitely is, has been some talk about trying to see what they can do about Birch Hill and Highland Park. But I'd have to go back to the report, but I definitely don't remember a footbridge.
We also talked about a possible blinking light for a walkway-
Walkway, yeah.
Because of the cost of a light.
Right.
Well, as we know, traffic is a really huge problem, especially on Main, well, just throughout our town. So it'd just be nice to have those families be able to walk with their kids to Noah Wallace and to the supermarket, um, without dodging cars. So, okay. Thank you very much for the summary.
Any other questions? I actually do have one question. And I know we're going to be talking about, you know, our next phase, our Phase Two, possibly during the, uh, our planning. But I'm wondering if, if we did choose to address part of Phase Two to get the sidewalks from Highland Park to CVS, is that something that could be, I know, uh, an add-on to the bid that we have now to possibly get that done by November? So if we had, uh, a walkway there for the students, say, from, uh, Ms. Porter's, they could go all the way to CVS safely, you know, starting this, next year's, uh, school. Is that a possibility?
I think that's-
Well, one thing, I mean, everything obviously could be a possibility, but that said, one thing I, I, there would be new sidewalks that would have to be created. So I don't think that, that would be an add-on. But one thing, I did drive the site today with, uh, Ross Arnold. And we stopped at the beginning of Highland Market and there are existing sidewalks on the other side. I think that potentially that could be replaced because there are already existing sidewalks there. And then once you get to Highland Park Market and you keep on going down, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, there are, there's not sidewalks there anymore, correct?
There's a couple, a couple sections after Highland Park that are, once you get past.
Not, so I-
Right.
Yeah. So I think the, the going down to, towards CVS, the places that are, already have existing sidewalks, we could definitely have them look at to get them included. But I would not suggest at this phase that if there isn't a sidewalk already there, to put one in, because there's a whole different process that we'd have to follow for that.
Right, I know, a whole different process. I didn't know if we could do that process. I know we, we could discuss it during the planning.
Right. But I think the ones that, the sidewalks that are already there further on, I think we could add on to that and have them repaired, I mean, replaced too.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item N two, to consider and take action on the following blighted propulous, fourteen Blue Ridge Drive, twenty-three Lakeview Drive.
Second? We have a motion to second. Kathy?
Um, under the provisions of the code, you have seventy-five days from the list to approve, disapprove, or modify it. Usually what we do is at the next meeting, we would have a motion to approve it. Typically, the town council would look at the properties and just make sure that these are properties that, um, they would like on the list. I do want to make note on, um, the Lakeview, uh, Drive property, which has been on the, uh, blighted property for quite some time. If you look at the second to last bullet point in my note, it's understood that the property is under contract and it's anticipated that it will sell. So hopefully this property will be, get off the blighted building list. So that would be good news.
And the neighbors would be very happy.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item N three, to review and approve the attached capital improvement policy.
Second? We have a motion to second. Kathy?
This is our capital improvement policy. This has, um, been a, a policy in effect since two thousand and five. This is something that our bonding agencies and our financial people really are very happy that we have, and I am recommending that we approve it as it is.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Uh, just one note on here, if you had a chance to look through this, which I hope you did, uh, under the policy statements, we try and keep at least two and a half percent of our annual general fund revenues allocated for, uh, for the operating budget, capital improvements. We'll keep that in mind when we get to the budget. Uh, there have been many years when we have underfunded our capital improvements. The result of that is always trying to catch up in future years. So ideally, we don't have to do that again this year. Okay, we have a motion to second. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item N four, to review and approve the attached debt management policy.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
Again, these are policies that we review on a biannual basis in the month of January, and I am not recommending any changes, and it was last approved in January of, uh, twenty twenty.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion on Agenda Item N five, to review and approve the attached reserve policy.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
Again, this is our, our reserve policy, and again, we have approved it on a biannual basis, and it was last adopted in January of twenty twenty, and I do not see the need for changes at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda Item N six, like to make a motion to review and approve the attached employee health self-insurance fund reserve policy.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
This is our employee health insurance. This is, uh, our policy, um, that is with the town and the Board of Education. And it was the last adopted in January of twenty twenty, and I do not see any need for changes at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
We're tabled in N seven, correct?
That is correct. Uh, just as, just for all of you to know, uh, N seven, we're going to be discussing the creation of the Fire Station Comprehensive Building Project. Uh, that'll probably be in our February meeting. We plan to do that, so.
We'll have some discussion with it in the strategic plan.
Yes. Okay.
Agenda Item N eight, I'd like to make a motion that the firm of PKF O'Connor Davies LLP of Weathersfield, Connecticut be appointed as a town independent auditor for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
This would be the appointment, it would be year four of a five-year period, and the cost of the audit would be eighty-one thousand, eight hundred, which we have budgeted.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N nine, I'd like to make a motion to set the annual rate of compensation, compensation for the town clerk at eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
Historically, the town clerk's position is assigned to pay grade ten of the administrative pay plan. CJ Thomas, chairman, requested for me to conduct a research and mark an analysis of the town clerk's salary for similar towns. Upon review, it was concluded that grade ten on the pay scale is appropriate for the clerk's position. The starting step on this grade is eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety thousand.
I have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Hope she got that correct in her notes over there.
Clerk got those numbers right?
Agenda Item N ten, motion to amend the appointments to the Farmington High School Building Committee as follows. Johnny Carrier, Town Council Member. Sarah Healy, Board of Education Member. Chris Fagan, Resident. And then the rest, as listed, will stay the same.
Second? We have a motion to second. Basically, there, there was an election. Our, uh, Town Council Member is no longer on the council. We had a, a resident member who is now on the council. So those two have just switched positions. And the previous Board of Education Member is no longer a Board of Education Member, so we added a new Board of Education Member. We have a motion to second. Any questions and comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N eleven, I'd like to make a motion to set the special Town Council meeting on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers.
Second? We have a motion to second. Kathy?
This is what we've discussed earlier. It would be a meeting on next Tuesday night at seven PM. Our workshop, as we discussed, was our nineteen twenty-eight building, the Town of Farmington Strategic Plan and Budget Targets. And anything that we don't get to, we will move to the next meeting of the month.
I have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N twelve, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, at six PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, and the town managers propose seven-year capital improvement plan.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
Just so you know that we do start a little bit early at six o'clock. We start with the public hearing where both the school and myself give our presentations. Then the Board of Education will be, um, at the council chambers. They will go through their, uh, capital budget in detail. And then you guys will all see my department heads, and they'll go through their, um, capital budget in detail. Typically, we do not take any action on the, the plan. What we do is that, because it's such a big part of our budget, we discuss it in February, and then again in March when we go through the budget.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N thirteen, I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing on February eighth, twenty twenty-two, at seven oh five PM, in the Town of the Farmington Town Hall Council Chambers, to consider the purchase of property owned by Robert and Eileen Bland, located at eighty-four eighty Meadow Road, eleven point two seven acres, and eighty-four eighty-one Meadow Road, seven point one three acres, for the total purchase price of six hundred and four thousand.
Second? I have a motion to second. Kathy?
As you can see, there is a note here, but typically we, we will have a public hearing at the next meeting, and we'll go through it in detail. This is just setting the public hearing. And then, just, uh, for the new council members, just so you can see at the end, the procedure would be, you would set the public hearing at tonight's meeting. And then we'd hold the meeting on, the public hearing on February eighth. Then you'd, at that February eighth meeting, you'd make an eight dash twenty-four referral to the TPZ at the February eighth meeting. We receive the eight dash twenty-four report at the March eighth meeting, and you'd vote on the acquisition for authorization at the March eighth meeting.
Right. Okay, we have a motion to second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N fourteen, make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed.
Second? We have a motion to second. Kathy?
No, no comment.
Okay. I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item O, we have no executive session that I'm aware of. And before I ask for a motion to adjourn, as has become my habit, I will leave us with a quote tonight from Mary Shelley. "The beginning is always today." With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the Town Council, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, meeting.
Second? We have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven fifty-nine. Thank you, everyone, and welcome.